About the motions, just in case this happens. So let's go through Joe's motion.
All right, everybody, we are ready. Oh, Joe's looking to good, wonderful. No worries.
Says join on the top of our side. What says not join? What says join again?
All right. All right, everybody, so we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee tonight on November 6th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so you can all rise and join us if you need to. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Students of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so perhaps we can all see that we have a complex environment happening right now, a hybrid environment, where our superintendent and director of operations, Ross Mulcarren, and Lancaster representative, Joe Griesen, are online. That is because they are at the MASC conference at Cape Cod, and so we're happy to have them online with us. Thanks, guys, for overcoming Wi-Fi issues to be here. And the rest of us will be here in the room with a large audience in the gallery, so we welcome all of our guests. I wonder if there's any public comment to start. All right, seeing none, we will continue on with the next item on the agenda, and that is the consent agenda, and I'll start with a motion.
I hereby move in accordance with general laws, Chapter 30, Section 39m, for approval of the proprietary items.
Round one.
I move to approve the November 6th, 2024 consent agenda. Sorry about that.
I'm going to second that, thank you. Yeah, that, that one is going to come later, so prepare yourself.
I'm ready.
Okay, so I second the motion for the consent agenda. Do we have any discussions? All right, seeing none, Joe, I actually have a point of order for you. Can you hear me, Joe? I don't think Joe can hear me. So we are going to hold a hand vote in the room here, and then I will ask Joe if he would like to weigh in, and he can say yea or nay. So for everybody in the room, what say you on the motion? All those in favor? Hand vote, thank you. And Joe, would you like to weigh in if your Wi-Fi is working? Any opposed? Okay, everybody, so that is unanimous. Mine is Joe, hopefully you can join us momentarily. The consent agenda is accepted. For the school person, school committee chairperson update, I have nothing new to share with you all, so we're going to move on to our student representative report, and I will welcome Eva to the room. And Eva, will you let us know, I think Ryan is otherwise occupied today?
Yeah, he's at the soccer game in Hangum.
Okay, so good luck to the varsity soccer team. Both of them actually are playing right now, so.
Okay, my report is really long, but starting off, our next Wolf Day will be on the 26th, and it will include our Powerpuff game, Pi Teacher, and Flattable Race. We also have the school play coming up, and it's A Christmas Carol. The French Exchange students and their teachers are here with us this week. And then there's some news from the music department. Seven students were chosen to represent Neshoba in this year's MMEA Future Music Educator Summit. This is an opportunity for students in grade nine through 12 who may be interested in pursuing a degree in music education someday, or an opportunity for our students to meet with other students from around Massachusetts who are in leadership roles. And then our sports update, we will be running a food drive leading up to Thanksgiving, which will be a friendly competition with Clinton High School to see which school collects more food. And then the playoffs have started. The volleyball team defeated Lemonster 3 to 2 to advance to the round of 32, when Neshoba fell to the number one seed, Westboro. The field hockey team was ranked number four in the state and defeated Burlington 6 to 0 in the round of 32. However, they fell to a tough Hopkin team, Hopkin team last night, 3 to 1. The boys soccer team upset Amherst Pelham 4 to 1 on Sunday to advance to the round of 32. They will travel to number four Hangum High School tonight for their second playoff game. The number seven seeded girls soccer team will host Sharon tonight in the round of 32. The cross-country teams will compete at Fort Devens on Saturday in the MIAA Divisional Meet. The cheer team will be competing in the Mid-Watch League Meet on Sunday. And the football team is currently 4 and 4 and are scheduled to play at Shrewsbury tomorrow at 7 o'clock. The golf team won the Division Two sectional title this year and then competed in the Division Two State Championship on the 21st at Brickshire Hills Country Club. They placed second in the state after having to play a playoff hole as they were tied with another team in second place. And the unified basketball team is 3 and 0 and looking forward to play against the staff on Wednesday, the 13th, after school.
Thank you, Eva. A lot goes to the high school. Any questions from the committee? I just have one question, can you, we heard about the first Wolf Day, but could you elaborate a little bit more, just for anybody who's new to this? What is the Wolf Day? Can you tell us anything about it from your perspective?
I thought the Wolf Day was really fun. We'd had half, like half day were classes, and then the second half was like games and activities you could sign up for. So I did bracelet making, and then the second half I did like walking outside. I thought it was really nice, especially when we can't have our phones. It was just a way to interact with people, and I kind of forgot about my phone for like the half of the day, so I thought it was really fun. I'm really glad that we're doing it again, and I hope that they can bring it back a lot more times next year for students.
Do you have any teachers signed up for the Pi Teacher contest yet?
Oh, no, but that's actually going to be really exciting.
Good luck to them. And thank you. Any other questions? All right, as always, Eva, we appreciate you being here.
Of course, thank you.
All right, guys, so moving on to the superintendent's report. That is for Kirk and Laura to kind of tag team, I think, but who wants to start?
I will go ahead and open. Madam Chair, thank you very, very much for the recognition. I am going to read from my script here and then pass it off to Assistant Superintendent Friend, because we have a very special guest with us tonight in Madison Oxnard. So the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Award for Academic Excellence is an annual award giving to high school seniors who excel in the classroom and make positive contributions in their community. As superintendent, I have the privilege to award Madison Oxnard this award. Guidance counselor Dan Glover has written on behalf of Neshoba Regional High School educators the following acknowledgement of Maddie's accomplishments. Maddie is an amazingly well-balanced and happy person who is the complete package of high morals and high energy level. She takes a positive approach in all she does. She has taken the most rigorous course loaded Neshoba has to offer and received nothing but As in every class, every year. However, what is even more impressive are Maddie's activities outside of the classroom, whether it be her co-founding STEMI's, a nonprofit program that encourages students of all ages to use innovative solutions to global, global crises, or her role in Project 351. She has used her creativity to help those in the community. She's been dancing since the age of three, and at the high school level, she's involved in the grain team, the youth climate council, and is also a mentor in Project 351. We are very fortunate to have her as a member of our community, as she is well-liked and respected by both staff and students alike. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to present the award.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. I am so privileged to be sitting in this seat this evening, because I have known Maddie since she was in kindergarten. And what an opportunity and a privilege it has been to see you grow and develop and, and now turn into what we knew was an amazing individual and amazing contributor to our Neshoba community. And now you're a senior, and we're going to be so sad to see you leave, but you have made a difference. And when I, when Superintendent Downing had told me that I was going to have an opportunity to speak on your behalf, I was so excited, and I started to reflect on my memories of you and the impact that you, you had, beginning in elementary school and then extending into middle school. And I started to jot all of them down, and then I stopped, because then I read what Mr. Glover had said, and I said, okay, that's sufficient. What else can I contribute to acknowledge Maddie? And so I turned to your own words, Maddie, which were used as an opening for the homecoming for Project 351. So Maddie's own word, words were used as part of the opening from Project 351, and these are Maddie's words. I serve because I'm motivated by the impact my actions have on the lives of others, our planet, and the next generation. I believe that showing someone else kindness can make a bigger difference than we know. I serve because good causes are worth fighting for, and because I know that when good people work together, they can truly be the change. I serve because everyone deserves to achieve their greatness and should never have their potential doubted because of what they look like or where they are from. I serve because we are all human and deserve to be treated with love and kindness. Madison Oxnard, Ambassador Lancaster. And the charge of Project 351 is to build a movement of youth-led service by engaging an unsung hero from each of Massachusetts 351 cities and towns. Maddie, you are our hero, and we are singing your praises tonight. We are so very proud of you. We're so privileged to provide you with this award, and we know that you're going to continue to do great things beyond Neshoba. Thank you.
Mom and Jeff?
Yes.
Do we get part of the table or behind the table? Yeah, that's wonderful. It's a keeper. Yeah, so we are so appreciative of your recognition and your kind words, Laura, but we're so impressed and grateful to Maddie and her work and all the leadership that she has contributed to the Neshoba community and beyond, it seems. So thanks, ma'am.
Thank you so much. This is an honor.
Okay, everybody, so that said, we shall keep the superintendent's report going, and Kirk, I turn back to you, I think.
Madam Chair, the sound was going in and out. Do you have my sound?
I do, can you hear me now?
Yeah, and in the event that I lose it, Ms. Friend, please just, just pick up, pick up where I dropped the ball, if that happens. Hey, you were the one to give congratulations to Maddie. That was fantastic. Included in your packet, today's the annual update. These are regular updates with the Asbet Valley Collaborative. So for our new members, we are a member of the collaborative where, that provides sources for students in our school system and transportation contracts for those things. So you'll see that the first update that's been provided by Executive Director Kathy Cummings is in your packet. It gets into the collaborative law, the guidelines and resources around the collaborative, the participating towns. And then you can also see pictures of some of our students in action within the collaborative. So last year, when it came to the committee, we were developing the Evolution Space. It's now completed and moved in, which has allowed the collaborative to also be offering more professional development offerings. I know I have a couple of meetings there as part of MAFS coming up, so they're able to use these spaces, which bodes well for revenue opportunities for the future. And I, I highlight that as one of the fiscal opportunities there. But our programs like OSA and REACH continue to be high-quality programs for students that have very specific and targeted needs for which those programs meet. And so we'll continue with our partnership with ABC as we move along. And then the last piece I wanted to update the committee on today is regarding the RHS Resource Officer. Recently, I met with Chief Luke Hamager of the Bolton Police Department to discuss the school resource officer role in regards to the needs of the town of Bolton right now. Now Bolton is experiencing some staffing changes, as the officers have elected to go to other systems or even locate out of state. And while Chief Hamager is filling these open positions, he needs to make adjustments on the force to ensure that the town of Bolton continually has an appropriate police force on duty. And so for a short period of time, Officer Casey McCarthy is being reassigned to some shifts to help all the officers in that department share in the responsibilities of serving the people of Bolton. So she will not be positioned directly at Neshoba Regional High School. We, this is temporary, and we'll go back to the way that we know our arrangement is outlined in our MOU once the staffing positions have been filled. And just know that the way this structure works, as we have a cautionary for the school resource officer position with the town of Bolton, is that she is paid by the town of Bolton, and the school district is then invoiced for our share of that. And we will not be invoiced, of course, for the time in which Officer McCarthy is not working directly at the high school. And then the last part is our update on strategic work, Madam Chair, regarding the school improvement plans. But I will leave that to Assistant Superintendent Friend to do the introduction when we get to that moment in the agenda. Now with that, I'll take any questions.
Excellent, thanks, Kirk. So any questions on the three items in the update? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to a place where the agenda merges, the strategic work update with new business that is the school improvement plans. And so Kirk or Laura, you can queue that up.
Great, I, I would, you know, be pleased to introduce our building principals to join us tonight to share with the committee their school improvement plans. As the committee will remember, our school improvement plans are all aligned to our district strategic plan. And our principals coordinate the action steps and efforts within their schools based on their school readiness and where they are at all in alignment with one another. So we thank them for being here this evening to share a presentation in general about their, the school improvement plans, and then they have each one to speak to their school improvement plans for their school's trajectory. So with that, I would like to introduce Mr. Joel Bates, the principal of the Florence Sawyer School.
Hi, good evening, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity.
I was going to introduce everyone, Joe. I know you have colleagues too. Mr. Kyle Grady is the principal of the Hale Middle School. Mr. Scott Blanchard, who is the principal of the Mary Rollinson Elementary School. Mr. Sean O'Shea, the principal of the Luther Burbank Middle School. Ms. Lenora Savilek, the principal of our, the Center School. And Dr. Kate Boynton, who is the principal of our Neshoba Regional High School. So I think Mr. Bates is anxious to get you all wrong.
So thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to present our school improvement plans this evening. My colleagues and I have collaborated closely to ensure that our efforts are aligned with one another and with the NRSD strategic plan. Tonight, we aim to provide you with an overview of our school improvement plan process, share our goals, and highlight areas of improvement relative to those goals. The school improvement planning in the Neshoba Regional School District is an ongoing and dynamic process that unfolds over multiple years. Each year, we reflect on our successes. Elliot can go to the next slide. Each year, we reflect on our successes and identify areas for continued growth. This reflection is partly informed by our state of the schools analysis, which we review with our leadership team during the summer months. Together, we assess our progress while identifying priorities and actions for the upcoming year and beyond. This collaborative collaboration with our colleagues is essential to ensure that our plans are coherent across our schools and in alignment with our strategic goals. An integral component of this process is our relationship with our school councils and the invaluable input and feedback that they provide. At this point, if you go to the next slide, and I would like to introduce my colleague, Principal Kyle Grady of Hale Middle School, who will share insights into the goals for our K to 8 schools.
So we have a page here that basically encapsulates our four goals and how they're overlaid with the strategic plan. So the four goals that we work, that we're working on are consistent among the K to 8 buildings. Dr. Boynton will talk later about the high school's goals, but these four goals you'll see are replicated into each of our individual school improvement plans. There might be some nuances that are different with, within the specifics of those plans, but those four goals, being a communication goal, a student learning goal, an SEL goal, and a safety goal are consistent. They are also vertically aligned with the Neshoba Regional School strategic plan. You can see more of the specifics about how those goals are related to the strategic plan if you were to look into each of our individual school improvement plans. It has more detail in there, and I think, I think you've all been supplied those, so by all means, you can look into those, and if you have further questions, that's something that we could answer to the air at another time. Elliot, could you go to the next slide? What we'll do here is we'll each go around and talk about some specifics to each of the goals, and then we'll turn over to Dr. Boynton to unpack her school improvement plan. So I'll start here with a little information about goal one, our communication, our communication goal. Currently, the district embraces a bunch of different tools that you're probably aware of that we use to communicate out to our families. This might be the use of smores, it could be our own individual newsletters, it could be the superintendent's newsletter. We work really hard to make sure that we're echoing the messages that are sent out from central office in our newsletters while also supplying specific information that pertains to our individual schools. We also utilize smores, that's a great tool, because that gives us some analytics on how many clicks are, we're receiving, and how deeply people are looking into the information we're putting out, and tells us how much time they're spending on our updates. So it's useful, it's useful to know. It also can tell us if it's being looked at from a desktop or from a mobile device. The teachers will utilize the Google Classroom predominantly and websites. There's been a lot of work, and this pertains to the communication procedures, been a lot of work done that's, that you all have done to craft the communication policy. We've shared those out with our teachers. We're in alignment across the district on a lot of those specific things that pertain to communication timelines, the communication platform, and the content that we want our teachers to have in those platforms. There's some deadlines coming up throughout the school year here, where we're going to supply our teachers with some time to continue work on their, their websites, so that the content is universally acceptable, accessible to our families. And you'll see the same things on teachers' pages pertaining to, you know, units and, you know, expectations for student classes, including success criteria that they might have for projects or assessments. Finally, around student progress, you know, we are working with teaching and learning and Assistant Superintendent Friend to pull together a group to review how we report out on our student progress, specifically around grade reports. That's work we're doing this year, and I imagine there'll be more information for you about how they'll progress. It's something that we haven't done in quite some time, and it's needed. That is, I believe, that is a K to 12 initiative. And with that, I'll turn over to Mr. Blake.
Thank you. Our second goal is aligned with strategic initiative to develop a professional learning community culture across all schools, departments, and grade levels. Our work in the PLCs continues to be anchored by the three big ideas of the professional learning community, which are focus on student learning, collaborative culture and collective responsibility, and results orientation. In addition, within our meetings, we focus on four essential questions that guide our work. What is it we want our students to know and be able to do? How will we know that they've learned it? How will we respond if they haven't learned what we intended? And how will we enrich an extent in the learning of students to demonstrate mastery? Through this process, we continue to partner with Solution Tree. In fact, last week, Jackie Tulman, who is our Solution Tree liaison, visited the district and sat in on PLC meetings at each school and provided us with some direct and actionable feedback, which was very helpful. And yesterday, she met with building administrators and instructional coaches in a virtual session to discuss several topics, including the importance of a guaranteed and viable curriculum for our students, the importance of clarity for our educators related to the why behind our PLC work, and some potential next steps for each of our schools. At the building level, our instructional coaches continue to be critical partners in this process. As we analyze evidence of student learning, we group students according to need, plan targeted interventions for our win block, which stands, as you can see on there, what I need now, and develop common assessments to measure student progress. Our coaches have also been, have also helped us. Our coaches have also been, have also helped us establish PLC structures as a mean to support teachers in other areas, such as with the rollout of our new ELA curriculum in support of math instruction at the middle school level, and to facilitate the use of STAR curriculum-based measures to track student progress and attaining early literacy skills, to name just a few. In addition, our aligned schedule has supported the work of the PLC by including dedicated time, not only for teacher teams within each building, but also time for teams to collaborate with their colleagues teaching the same grade level or content area across the three towns. It's important to note that our professional learning communities also directly support our district's equity work. For example, PLCs have helped to align our understanding of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three instruction as outlined in our MTSS handbook, which in turn has also helped us more clearly define our staff process and grow our staff process. It's also connected to the development and articulation of clear learning objectives aligned to state standards, and it's helped us promote a culture of high expectations for student learning. As a result, and through this process, we continue to build our collective efficacy as we work to ensure positive outcomes for each and every student. Now I'll hand it over to Principal O'Shea for Goal Three.
Thank you. So Goal Three is our work around equity, and this year, we're continuing to deepen our commitment to integrating social, emotional practices and equity work into our daily instruction and overall student life. The foundation of the work included the Equity Audit, which you had a chance to review last spring. The administrative team took that in deeply this summer and then took that work, after our deep dive into it, back to each staff, where we then identified next steps and for each school. Now each, now, coming up this winter, each school will create its own equity team based on the work of the district equity team that was led by Dr. Warner. These school-based equity teams will bring a district-level learning directly to the staff. That will also include dedicated time at each staff meeting for ongoing discussions, skill building, and reflection on our equity practices. We're also advancing our Calm Compassionate Teaching Initiative with Larry Epstein. He will continue to provide direct support, especially for school-based teams now. This approach is integral into our staff process, where we're focusing on proactive, compassionate support for students. We want to ensure that each student feels seen, safe, and ready to learn, and these practices can be reinforced in day-to-day interactions in response to student needs. The Panorama Survey has helped us track and monitor SEL progress over some time, offering a year-to-year snapshot of how students are doing socially and emotionally. This will continue to help guide some of the decisions we make as we move forward. Specifically for middle school students, this year marks a strength and commitment to our advisory program with the new aligned schedule. Advisory time is now a permanent feature in, across all of our schools, and it's giving access to students, consistent access to students for that support. Within advisory, we're also incorporating the MEFA Pathways Framework, which is a statewide resource that helps students explore their own strengths and talents and interests. This really empowers students to start considering future pathways in a meaningful guided way and that can lead into things such as the Innovation Pathways at the high school. Through our equity teams, Calm Compassionate Teaching, Panorama, and other surveys, and the advisory program, we're taking more meaningful steps this year to embed SEL practices throughout the school and helping every student feel supported both academically and emotionally. These initiatives align with the district's goals to ensure equitable opportunities and outcomes for each student by fostering awareness, representation, inclusive practices, and open communication around diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Grady.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about our fourth goal, which is safety. It's connected to our strategic goals, review of school safety, and develop priority actions as district and for individual schools. So all of our schools here in the district have worked on strengthening and streamlining our safety procedures and protocols. We continue to train staff, train students, work with students, and implement these safety protocols fully into daily practices. Our schools are all in our second year now of working or implementing the Raptor system, which is in every school, and that system screens all visitors who come into the building at any time when there are students, including after school, when we have extended day programs going on. And we also have put additional cameras in and around various school buildings as needed. In addition to this work, our schools have been working closely with, always work closely with our law enforcement officials, fire, and our police officials in each town to keep up to date on best practices related to drills and protocols, specifically when we're talking about things like evacuation drills, lockdown drills, ALIS, which guidance is often evolving for those things. We always have our eye turned towards age-appropriate language and age-appropriate protocols when we involve students in these procedures across all our schools pre-K to 12. Our schools each have safety teams, they meet monthly. Those teams are comprised of administrators, administrative assistants, law enforcement officials, teachers, staff, and we work to align our procedures and our protocols involving all those drills that I spoke of earlier. We also meet as a group to talk about things that might be going on particular to any one of our schools. For example, if there is an emergency or was an emergency, we work together to learn from that and always take information from that emergency, whatever form it was in, that we can apply to future scenarios. After any sort of drill, we collect data, including fire drills, we collect data quickly, immediately, from law enforcement, from staff, in order to learn how to best continue to implement these practices. Our goal is always to minimize disruption to students and staff during the school day. And finally, our schools and our administrators are working closely with Mariah Swicker, our student and staff health and wellness director, to ensure that student physical and emotional safety is at the forefront of everything we do. And now I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Boynton.
Thank you, Lenora.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Hi, everybody, thanks for the opportunity to, to share an update on the high school goals. Perfect, Elliot, thank you. So our five goals remain the same, they are robust. I think I mentioned last year that even though safety and communication are not mentioned on the high school goals, they are being worked on behind the scenes. Having seven goals seemed a little bit too much. So our first goal remains around enhancing and increasing students' sense of engagement and belonging at the high school. Last spring, our departments each individually gave an engagement survey to our students to provide department-specific feedback. There were five core questions that we pulled from the Panorama Survey so that we could have that through line of consistency. And then free write options for the students to give very specific, very actionable feedback to our, to our departments, and it was, it was pretty incredible. And the work that we did through the year, we saw growth in, in, in increase in sense of belonging and engagement throughout. Our departments continue to have this as department-wide shared goals and universally shared goals. I'll share a few sort of additional action steps that we've created and are implementing. Look Force focused on engagement. The superintendent and I had our first meeting of our Student Advisory Council during one of our pilot flex blocks, and the students gave us some incredible feedback. And that advisory council will serve multiple different goals here, from equity to engagement and belonging to levels to schedule, so they'll be able, be able to give us some incredible feedback. I have to say that our cell phones, the cellphone policy that has been implemented at the high school, we have seen a marketed increase in engagement in the classroom as a result of that universally practiced and applied cellphone policy. And so that's has been, that's been a game changer for, for everyone. Goal number two remains curriculum and instruction at the high school, and we are continuing to develop and build out curriculum guides and maps within all of our departments and sort of wherever departments are in the review cycle, that dictates some of the activities that are happening. Departments are also leaning in and in collaboration with Teaching and Learning, pulling away to do some deep dives into their curriculum and instructional practices. We've got a bio reboot that's happening and a chemistry reboot that's happening. English continues to, to work with Teaching and Learning, and we essentially, what I call it, it's a day away, it's a professional learning opportunity where teachers are working with each other on curriculum and instructional practices at Teaching and Learning together. So that's happening pretty much in, I want to say, four or five different departments at this juncture, and we're timing them out. So that's pretty exciting work on the curriculum and instruction point. Innovation Pathways, we are in full implementation mode with our engineering pathway and our business pathway, giving, getting some great feedback from our students, and then we've completed a planning grant for information pathways to expand those opportunities. One of the things I'm most excited about is our work, continued and deepening work with Kaleidoscope for Deeper Learning. Laura and I had a planning meeting with our DESI folks, and we planned a fairly robust series of activities, getting into classrooms with learning walks connected directly with our focus on 2A2, which is well-structured lessons related to engagement and belonging. And so we'll be doing learning walks, being able to collect data, and being able to provide feedback with the intention of seeing evidence of well-structured lessons increase over a 10 to 12-week period. So we're working with DESI to be able to collect some concrete data around, around that. Engaging in learning walks as well, our staff are engaging in learning walks with, with department heads, department heads are engaging in learning walks with a supervision and evaluation lens, with the administrative team, those who have been trained in analyzing teaching for student results. That's been pretty exciting, actually. And then another thing that is related to this, and it kind of overlays everything, but our Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate digital portfolios have launched, and they've launched in a couple of senior English classes. The products are amazing, and that's going to get scaled up and out to all of our students' next homeroom period, which is next Thursday, and the students in those English classes will be pushing in to homerooms to model the portfolios that they've created. And all of our students will now then begin to develop and create their own customized Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate portfolios, digital portfolios. And I'm quite proud of this because this is homegrown Neshoba, we have a strong portfolio team led by Janine Bule, our assistant principal, and the platform and the tool was created by Mr. Stefanowitz. And so it is homegrown Neshoba, and it's the coolest thing ever, we can't wait to share it with you. At the end of the year, we'll have some seniors who'll be able to present in a showcase. So that's very exciting. Let's see, what else, that I think that is, oh, I will share that under the engagement and belonging, Wolf Day is a direct activity to create community and also a sense of belonging. So it's intentional on the part of the administrative team to incorporate that structure. In terms of goal number three, well, we just had a three-week pilot that I think went very, very well, and so we are following our, the process as outlined in the contract, and our staff meeting next week will be a town meeting-style format where we get to talk about all different aspects of the pilot schedule and move the needle forward. I've had some great conversations so far. We got student feedback through thought exchange, and the students really loved, as Ryan mentioned at one of the earlier school committee meetings, they really liked the longer periods, and they loved the flex block. So looking forward to updating folks on the high school schedule. Goal number four, taking a look at auditing the process of leveling courses at the secondary levels, we are taking information from the Equity Audit, and that is informing our conversations. And in fact, tomorrow at our leadership meeting, we're going to go back in and dig in to that conversation and start with the end goal in mind, taking a look at what do we want to see in regards to high school levels and working backwards from there while, excuse me, while utilizing data from our course enrollments, class size, looking at grades, so this, a long process, but looking, taking an informed and data-driven decision-making process in, in terms of looking at our, at our levels. Our last goal is around the MTSS process, and I will say that there are some successes there in terms of our, our internal staff process, our self-assessment and MTSS. We have great success with our Student Success Center as well as the BRIDGE program. As mentioned earlier, we're enhancing our, our work and expanding our work in Calm Compassionate Teaching, and we'll be developing an equity team in January. One thing I will say that the high school, I think, definitely needs work with, and we explored this during the pilot schedule, is being able to have a professional learning community structure. The high school schedule right now does not, does not facilitate that. So our educators had the opportunity within the flex blocks over the three-week pilot to experience a PLC structure and to try on for size, looking at student work protocol. And so that was pretty exciting, and the high school team also had a meeting with Jackie Tolman yesterday to map out some of our next steps pending approval of the, an adoption of a new schedule that would incorporate a flex block. Okay, that's my, that's my piece, and I'm going to turn it back over to Joel.
So, yeah, if you could go to the next one, Elliot? Nope. Forward. And one more. Okay. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give us this chance to just share the work that we're doing together and supported the strategic plan. It's, I value not only the calibration that we have together, but just the, the shared experience, and I think it comes together in alignment for, for all of our students in Neshoba identity. We're happy to entertain any questions you might have for this.
Well, that was a lot, and I'm sure that the committee has taken time before this to look at the school improvement plans. I wonder if there's any questions? Yeah, Jackie, start.
I have a few of my questions, and it's more, I know that school committee meetings are long and not everybody watches all of them. So part of my role here is to also report back and work with Dr. J. So I had a few follow-up questions around the equity work that you all mentioned in the school improvement plans. So I guess the first question I have, there's one reference, this will be, it's mentioned about a targeted home-based goal. Can you explain a little bit like what that is?
Sure. Sure. So Principal O'Shea talked about the, the coordination that we have with our advisory programs. Homebase is the name of our advisory program. Several years ago, we rebranded it, but it is, for all intents and purposes, an advisory program. Our students meet every week. We use a research-based curriculum, Trails to Wellness, they're based on the CASL competencies, there are 25 lessons over the course of the year. In terms of the, the question, Dr. Reiner, on the targeted goals based on data, our students take a pre-assessment survey, just to, to, you know, seek out information about whether or not they have a trusted adult that they can go to, and, you know, their sense of belonging, and where can the school be better for them, and, and from that, we can use these 25 lessons over the course of the year to maybe target one area or another. We then follow up with a mid-year and an end-of-the-year survey in addition to the Panorama surveys that the students do. And I know that the Hale and Burbank curriculum have, have similar... And I know that the Hail and Burbank curriculum have similar assessments.
You have one more?
Yeah. So I already know the answer to this question and I think it kind of relates a little bit to what we're talking about. I know that all of the buildings are working on creating school-wide equity teams and that there's this sense of a feedback loop around the panorama surveys, the surveys that you're referencing. Are there any ways other than the surveys that you all are hoping to include family input into the equity work that you're undertaking this year?
Yes, I don't want to take it away from Dr., from Mr. Downing or Superintendent Downing or Assistant Superintendent Friend, but just in terms of the school-wide equity teams.
Kirk, would you like to weigh in on the school-based equity teams?
Thank you. Yes, I would. And thank you, Dr. Reiner, for that question. We are in a place right now where we're building capacity, much our leadership team. And our leadership team is going to be going back to their schools and building their school-based leadership team to build capacity within their buildings to host these questions. So these are our next steps. And we do have plans to be building engagement with our community members and our students. As you know, Dr. Reiner, and the committee knows, Dr. Boynton and I had begun that work in high school, with a high school focus group at this time. So yes, it's all part of the patient trajectory of how we build capacity and durability in this work over time. Because when we're talking about equity, we're really talking about something really very basic, and that is academic excellence for each and every student. And recognizing that the pathway to academic excellence for each and every student is a divergent pathway. And so I would invite Assistant Superintendent Friend to offer any pro-thoughts if she wishes.
I was just nodding my head. Right? That is the work and we're intentionally going, we're trying to go as quickly but as carefully and intentionally as we can. And so building up the strength of our principals and our leadership team was our first step, the district equity team. So the school-based team will be the next. So we're trying to move as quickly but as thoughtfully as possible because we recognize the impact that our actions have with all of our work and particularly this work. So taking it one step at a time.
Would you guys say it's fair to say that you're not completely sure how you're going to gather additional input because that's just something that you're looking at in January? And I think Jackie's question was how, how will we gather family input?
I would agree, Madam Chair, to say that we have, if you will orchestrate or put together a roadmap in terms of a finish to that point is, would not be accurate. So what we're doing is we're capacity building in terms of understanding the work that we need to do. And it's from that work and collecting the feedback from our educators and from our building-based work that we're going to be putting plans forward. So this is all part and parcel with all of the things that we're doing around our equity work in terms of how we're looking at our communication strategies, how we use data to understand student learning in the classroom. And so following the guidance of Dr. Almond Jackson, it's wise of us to take a very deliberate approach in this work to ensure durability over time in the things we believe in.
Any other questions?
Can I just make a comment?
Oh, sure.
So first, I wanted to say thank you so much for all of the work that you have done towards this and all of the tremendous work that you've done over the last few years. The growth over the last few years is just phenomenal. Struggling to think of good excuses. But thank you for that because the change is really noticeable and it's just outstanding. And Kate, I have a couple of comments for you. It's all good. It's all good. You mentioned the cell phone policy and at the open house night, just in a couple of different situations independently, parents were commenting about how appreciative they were. So if you have not heard that yet, parents are very happy that this has happened. And a question, and that is, it's so fabulous to hear how you're collecting information from the students and really getting meaningful feedback from them about their experiences and all the different specific, I mean, I think there's lots of different ways you're looking for information. And I'm wondering if you have had an opportunity to look back to the students and so that there's the, closing the circle there, saying we look for this information and this is what we took from this information and giving it back to them so that they are really understanding how valuable their, the feedback is to you?
Yeah, we've started, we've started that feedback loop to students. We post a lot in our Google classrooms. The students rely on their class Google classrooms. I meet with Ryan and Ava as well. We have our administrative team pushing in to our student council as well. I haven't, the most recent data related to the schedule, we haven't shared back yet, but we plan to share back and it's, there's some very compelling student comments that we can aggregate and share out. I actually had an English teacher approach me as well because in an assignment, and I forget the, it's like a persuasive letter, there's a student who wants to write about his experience in flex block, being so positive. And he and I are going to get together and meet so he can, I can share some of the student feedback that he can use as evidence in his letter. So it's small little things like that and we're looking to intentionally expand out and share out, you know, more fully the trends that we're seeing.
That's fantastic.
Thank you.
I feel like Amy Wussel said something.
Well, I just wondered a little, if you could talk a little bit more about your work with DESI and the kaleidoscope. I don't really understand that that well and I, I'm just wanting to get a better sense of it, I guess.
Sure. So last year, we partnered with DESI Kaleidoscope. You may remember that we applied for a grant, which provided us access into the DESI Kaleidoscope Network. And the focus of DESI is on deeper learning as defined by ensuring learning experiences are reflective of creativity, so multiple modalities, identities, students see the relevance of the work and can see themselves reflected in the learning materials. And then mastery, right? High expectations for each and every student with high levels of support. That's kind of the definition, operating definition of deeper learning from the coherence guidebook from DESI and the work with DESI, deeper learning kaleidoscope. And so we began that partnership with a working group that Dr. Boynton had created, a combination of department heads and faculty, small group. The work continued through the summer with unpacking some units using the DESI deeper learning unpacking tool as a mode of growing understanding of what are we currently doing that's hitting these marks and where are there opportunities for revision. The work had just begun. We, you know, we're gaining momentum with that group and the work. And so we had the opportunity, because we participated last year and applying again, so we submitted another application this year and we were accepted into the network again. We're only, Dr. Boynton is showing me six fingers.
Six schools.
Six, six schools in the Commonwealth. And we are partnered with consultants, really high-quality consultants who work with high-performing districts and varying spaces along the continuum. And they have grown to know our areas of strength and our opportunities for growth. And so they helped us this year really hone in on, I think, and Dr. Boynton referenced, two specific elements that we're focusing on, that student engagement and well-structured lessons in support of the deeper learning framework. And we have established a plan for this year with the support of our consultants, which includes learning walks with them, with department heads, with teachers, looking at student work protocols, and then measurable targets for growth of what we're hoping to see in these inquiry cycles. So it's both working to create these lowercase a accountability measures for growth, but also providing an opportunity to work with a consultant to help us not only identify but provide support, ideas and resources to help our teachers get there. So it's been a fruitful partnership and I believe that Dr. Boynton would say that the educators who've been a part of it have grown. It's also been supplemented by our attendance at the DESI Instructional Leadership Institute, which we attended with a high school team this past summer and then a team the previous summer as well. So we're looking for these opportunities to extend the learning and the framework to mow it out so it becomes organically part of what we do. So it's systemic adaptive work, but I would say that it's, we're gaining traction and we are gaining.
Yes.
I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, it is. Thank you.
Do you build that, if you said it starts with a small team of people, does it, how does it build out to become organic and systemic?
So over the last two years, we've included different folks from different departments. So there's more departments that are now involved. And then tomorrow is, I have a leadership meeting and so we'll be talking about one main agenda item for leadership is to talk about the, remind folks that these are our instructional areas of focus and this is how Kaleidoscope is going to be helping. And then share hopefully the learning walk schedule and invite folks in to the learning walk schedule. And then it's becoming part of that, the everyday conversations about teaching and learning at the high school and part of the feedback loop as we grow in our, grow in our learning capacity, you know, as a learning organization.
I jotted down a bunch of notes here. I'm going to try to consolidate it into as few words as I can. The first thing I want to say is that I really think the school improvement plans are super important and it's obvious how much good work is captured within them. The, I think it's really important to share out some way. So I guess one of the things I'm wondering is how are these, how do parents in our community know that this work is in the works? Like that these school improvement plans are developed and that this work is planned for this year? Are they, are they, how accessible are they to our parents? That's one of the things I was wondering and it kind of leads to some of my other questions. Like I think one of the things I heard you talking about within the communication goals in the K through eight school improvement plans was teacher websites and making that goal this year to build them out so that they are kind of more standardized and include success criteria. And I guess I was just poking around at some teacher websites right now and honestly, I've been a parent in this district for many years and I had trouble finding them. So I just wanted to make sure that that is part of what you're thinking about as you build these out is trying to make sure that keeping this accessible to the people who are going to be using them is.
For sure. This is why we've identified it as a goal.
Great. Hold on. That question?
Yeah, Joel was weighing in, but Kirk, do you want to start?
Yeah, I just, I think I just want to remind this, hold on, that that was outlined in superintendent goals, that I presented that to you. And that the work and the training that our team is doing and working with our educators is that we set a target of getting these things built up by the winter break. I just met with them last week and some of those meetings with teachers may take us into January, but we have to take a very personal approach in working with teachers on those things. So that is reflected also in the superintendent's goals and these school improvement plans are aligned to that.
Awesome. Yeah, it's definitely, I know it's not, I wasn't expecting to see it done right now. I was just noticing that a part of that work is making sure that people can find them once they are built up.
Yeah. Our communication specialist is working on that, that infrastructure piece.
Awesome. The other note that I made to myself was about the shared student learning goals that were, I think, one of the items included in the high school's school improvement plans. I think it was regarding like developing shared student learning goals that were coming out of the surveys that each department did last year. And I just wanted to give an example of something that's already, it has changed from my students' experience. When conferences were just held this past week, I got an email from a teacher that sent me a survey asking for my input on how my student was doing in their class in advance of the conference. And I completed it and I forwarded it to Principal, just saying this was awesome because I really felt like I got a chance to provide like individual feedback to a teacher who was asking about my student. And when I, when I had my conference and I talked to this teacher, he said that it was part of the department's shared student learning goal. So who knows, it's a plan that is like developed and working already. That was amazing. And so I'm really excited to see how that rolls out for, across the high school and the district. My last question, if I am allowed one more, has to do with the student advisory council. I was just wondering if you could explain a little bit about how you formed it? Like where all students kind of made aware of this opportunity and they could express their interest in it?
Yep. Every single student was invited. The target number was 16 to 20, to kind of keep it manageable. We have actually now 20 students who are on it. And we wanted it to be representative of all of the students at Nishoba, not necessarily proportionally, because then it would look like Nishoba. We wanted every single student group, if possible, represented, all grades, colors, religion, backgrounds, you name it. And we have what I believe is an extremely representative group. We shared the, in the Google survey, the purpose of the group was to meet with the superintendent as well as the principal to help our learning, to hear about the student experience. And so survey was sent out. I also elicited the support from a couple of staff members to kind of tap on the shoulder of some of our students who may be feeling a little bit reticent to lean in to this. And so we got a shout-out to Mr. Denson, actually, because he was able to encourage quite a few students to join. And where we centered the conversation, we got first-hand introductions and sort of why they joined the group. And some of them were like, "Mr. Denson told me I should join." And that was fine. But then centered the conversation, which was about 45 minutes, it was during one of our pilot flexes, around belonging and asked the students, "I know I belong when I feel." And then they answered that question. And the conversation was rich, it was thought-provoking, they leaned in, they were vulnerable with us. And that's all I'll share right now because the superintendent and I have not yet really fully processed. We're intending our second, our second meeting to be before December vacation with students. So our aim is to meet four times at a minimum, perhaps more, but second meeting is, yeah, I haven't set the date yet, we just talked about it today, to say that we are, we would like to meet before December break.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. No, it was powerful.
Ms. Cohen, just in regard to your first question, all of our school improvement plans are posted on our websites. We want you to see them while they're still in draft form before, I think, our school councils have had their final approval and then they'll be shared with our communities as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. Could that ever be like a...
Could that ever be like a family university idea? Because I, I mean, I feel like this is how we spend a lot of our time is like helping people connect the threads of information that are happening in so many different places. That would be a fun thing, especially for like the transitional times, you know, from eighth grade to high school.
That's a great idea. So I see that Laura's taking notebook. Kirk, were you able to hear what Jackie just said?
Thank you. Jackie, you broke up something when you mentioned the family university or in terms of the school improvement plans? Well, what our committee is that the school improvement plans are a function of the governance of, of a school and so that committee advises around the plan and they're brought together and coordinated. It's the activities that are within those plans that are lifted out and how our community learns about those plans. So I'm frankly, as a superintendent, less concerned about if a particular parent knows about a plan and more concerned about are you engaging with us on the important topics and the important elements that are within those plans?
I appreciate that.
Or developing and growing families university.
Okay. Yeah, although I will say that these things are kind of genuine goals, Kirk. And so I think they're actually fantastic marketing tools to champion in the community with the amazing work. And I mean, of course, it lives in the meeting materials, but I think that maybe what Jackie is saying and others are saying is that this is a way to really show families all the great work you guys are doing.
Well, I was selfishly thinking about like, I have a fifth grader who's going to sixth grade, had never been through a middle school experience. Where do I find the Google classrooms? How do I navigate Power School? Like I think that there are these critical transition times that we could help families, even if it's just like having our amazing communication specialists do like a walkthrough of like, here's how you access things. Cause I think you don't know what you don't know until you need to and then you don't have a mind.
I think that, I think that's a great suggestion, Dr. Ryan, and we will, we will take that back to our cabinet team on Monday. As I know Ms. Hannigan has, has some thoughts about how to lift the communication of these efforts. So thank you for that.
So I have just two quick things on my list here. First thing is a quick question. Second one is maybe a little bit probing and I'm not sure, perhaps Kirk, this is more for you. The first question is about the new pathway. I think that you guys were soliciting feedback from the community not that long ago on that potential next pathway and forgive me if I missed it, but have you decided on the information pathway?
Yes. We received positive affirmation from our families that we would have interest and we submitted, you know, there are multiple steps for the application process. We submitted the application for the planning grant. We were successfully received it and we will be moving forward with the submission of the next part of the application with the intention of implementation next fall.
Amazing.
We're excited about that pathway because that pathway is divergent. It has a broadcast journalism and an art component and then it has a data science component. So we're excited about the diversion path.
So that kind of, you know, it illustrates my thinking right now where I feel very excited, similar to Sharon. First and foremost, your presentations were exceptionally organized. They were efficient, they were concise, they were informative, they demonstrate all the amazing things that you guys are doing. Kirk, this is to your credit, it's to the credit of your entire team, including teaching and learning and all of your building administrators, but also all of your staff members who seem like they are open to this tremendous work. I hope it's exciting for them and they see opportunities to learn and grow themselves. So I thank you all for all of that. I really, really do. I think our kids benefit immensely from this. I wonder as you all, you know, you implement these amazing plans, I think I saw in there that you are also connecting your staff members' goals to all of these school improvement goals and which then feed up to the strategic plan. So as teacher goals are due, you know, middle of, middle of October, beginning of November, I imagine that they were privy to this, these plans and they were kind of either being asked to focus or, you know, how does this work its way down to the classroom folks?
Yeah, and here getting this information in here tonight, this is a process that frankly begins much earlier and you're familiar with our state of the union addresses that we do, state of the school addresses we do over the summer and we prep those, the focus and those things. So our, our principals take that to their faculty staff very early on and as we are looking to, to build on alignment to those goals, they are speaking those processes right now of working and confering with teachers on alignment to goals.
Great. All right. So if there are no other questions on the school improvement plans, we'll thank our principals one more time. You're an amazing group.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I just, I want to thank you for the recognition of our educators and the role that they play in this important work because all the work that we do administratively is, that's, that's where the learning happens, is in the classroom with teachers and students. So thank you for that recognition of our educators.
Thank you. Some of the guidance clearing, that's okay. Do you have a score for the girls varsity soccer game?
It's currently five-four.
Five-four Neshoba. Anybody get a boys update? I would love that. My kid is clearly not using his phone right now. Okay. So we're going to go forward with the agenda. We have just one more item of new business and I'm going to let Joe cue us up here because this is, he's asking for us to approve a recommendation of the school building committee. So Joe, help us up here. What is this?
All right. Well, why don't I start with the motion, if you please, Madam Chair?
Indeed. So I have Amy ready to read it. Are you ready?
Oh, I'm, okay. Love, Ms. Cohen, come here.
Although she would love for you to read it.
I defer to Mr. Gleason.
Yeah, I love reading my own motions, Madam Chair. I hereby move in accordance with general laws, chapter 30, section 39m for approval of proprietary item specifications list as presented, which priority item specifications list having been unanimously recommended for approval by the Neshoba Regional School, Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee on October 24th, 2024. I further move to direct Skanski USA, our own as project manager, for the construction of the new Neshoba Regional High School to include this proprietary specifications list and its 90% construction document submission to the Massachusetts School Building Authority as required on or before November 20th, 2024.
And I'll second that, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We will open it to questions, which might be, I'm going to ask it for Scott. Can you please help us understand what is a proprietary list and why do we need to approve it?
Are you talking to me, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I didn't hear you. This is, it sounds significantly more complicated than it really is. So our design team has identified 10 controls, systems and equipment that are either sole or dual source types of equipment and controls that we need for the high school build, or they are necessary for purpose of harmonization with existing systems within the school district. So if you look at the list that was presented, there's 10 items there. A good chunk of those pertain to the theater program and the construction of the new theater. Those are generally single source or dual source equipment requirements. The other items on there pertain to, about that? They pertain, they pertain to security systems within the district that require harmonization with those existing systems. Just to give you a little bit of background on this, this list is required to be submitted with our 90% construction document submission this month. And so you understand that generally speaking, we are required to secure bids from three providers as part of the bid process. But because there are limited sources available for these types of products, equipment and controls, we have to identify those that don't meet the three purveyor requirement and note those in our submission. So this is just a perfunctory requirement of state law and of the MSBA. And as I said, it's, it's just 10 items and that's about it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for that, Joe. Any further questions?
So if I'm understanding this, these are systems that there are not a lot of options available to, for these systems. Like it sounds like there's either, there's only one or two options available. I guess my concern is, is this what Skanska and the school building committee think is the best solution going forward for these systems? Cause it seems like it's locking us into a situation where there's, you know, things seem to break down in the future, there won't, maybe the company goes out of business and we don't have any vendors for these supplies. So is this really the best way to address these situations?
So Joe?
Yeah.
Or Kirk?
Yeah, this, this is Mr. Powell and this is based upon the recommendation of our field consultant and practice in areas, some that, and pardon me in front of the moment, but current system that would follow proprietary. So this is one requirement of school committee approval in order to help advance the project forward that has to be submitted to the MSBA.
Did you get that, Scott? I think Joe's phone was ringing at that moment.
Really, when my phone rings is when, I've had no phone calls and I've got two phone calls in the last two seconds.
You're like our fan.
I thought the owl was scooting.
So Kirk, I think what you basically just said was that this is pretty standard procedure. Our theater consultant has made the recommendation, the school building committee has voted to, to recommend that this committee vote in favor of this motion.
Correct. And I might ask our chief procurement officer, Mr. Ross, to comment if he has any comments here.
No, nothing further. So with regards to the theater equipment where it's either sole source or dual source with, there's limited options, you have to by procurement line note that. So it's not an open bid process where you're making an assumption that there's multiple products in the market that could fit your specs, but your specs dictate that it's either one or two of these available things available. With regards to the building controls, so Mr. Powell, to your point, I think you were asking about replacing these across the district. Was that sort of your question?
Sort of. I mean, you know, like in New Jersey, the district had problems when their control ports went out because there was no way to replace them because, you know, they were basically scavenging from other schools. And so I'm just concerned we're going to have a similar situation here where something's going to go out, the businesses aren't in existence. How are we going to replace them?
So with regards to the new build and the things that are stacked here, again, so this is, that brings up on the harmonization of our systems, so our facilities department, any of our security aspects, our networking, all still continue to work together. I will say these systems that are listed here, when we have issues with anything related to the temperature control or anything else within the district, that these are not the issues that we're having. These systems typically work just fine for us. We don't have issues with them. So putting them in place in the new high school makes perfect sense.
Any other questions or concerns on the motion? All right. So I'm not seeing any. Joe, do I need to do a roll call vote because you're online or can you just do a voice
I would recommend a, a roll call vote, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Unless, yeah, I, because I'm the only one that's voting. It's not, look, present in the meeting room, but as an attorney, I always err on the side of caution, so I would do the roll call vote.
All right. Very good. So Joe, start us off. How do you vote?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
I'm seeing.
Robin?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, John.
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay. So thank you everybody for that. We're going to move the agenda now beyond that issue to unfinished business, of which there is none. And we will go to subcommittee slash advisory reports. I wonder if any of the subcommittees have anything pressing that they want to make the committee aware of? Jackie?
I just wanted to give an update that Dear J will convene for their monthly advisory board meeting next Tuesday, November 12th, here in this room, which is exciting. And that they're going to be looking at a variety of things, including leadership positions and then also looking at the proposed goals and recommendations that were shared in our last meeting. So I'm hoping to bring back some of that initial information to this group for further consideration.
Excellent. Thanks to Jackie and Dear J. Any other subcommittee reports?
There'll be another batch coming.
Paulie says there's another batch coming, ready, I saw. And John and Robin are going to be meeting with me hopefully for the next meeting to first of all, get them oriented, even though they've already had a crash course here, but also to assign them officially to subcommittees, although Robin, I think you're already active on two subcommittees.
I haven't met with them yet, but I've been assigned.
You've been assigned. Okay. So John, John will be. Okay. So the next item on the agenda, guys, items for next agenda. If you're looking at the planning calendar, and I wonder, I'll be at some kind of hand me. If not, no big deal. Our next meeting is going to be remote on November 20th. And the agenda is there, or the potential agenda is there. Anybody have anything they'd like to add either to the parking lot or to that particular
It would be helpful to potentially put just an opportunity for us to talk about the recommendations that were.
That is on. Oh, sorry. I got you. Yeah. So hopefully you have something, just let the materials come at next meeting when they approve their minutes and then we can bring it to the full committee and unfinished business.
I have two, I don't know if these are parking lot requests. One is, I didn't, I didn't actually do my research to. I have a recollection of getting an update from our guidance department in previous years on college report card. Yeah, like a college report card, the college profile. I don't know where it fit into our year, but I don't think we got one last year.
Jody, Jody presented.
Last year too.
I'm not sure if last year, but Kirk, is that something that we can put into the parking lot to have our director of counseling, guidance and counseling come?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
So I'm going to throw that in the parking lot.
And then my second request had to do with, could we get an update on what's going on with NEASC? Because I know parents received requests to complete surveys. Are we in an accreditation reviews, like self, I just, I don't, I don't really understand what's happening right now.
Could that be in maybe a superintendent's report? Yes.
Absolutely. If you include it in the parking lot, we'll, we'll provide an update on the accreditation process.
Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Anything else, guys?
I will, is as we, we're going to be getting into budget, this is where we know our meetings are really going to start to pack in. So we'll kind of ebb and flow when that comes into play as we're not in a pressed urgent situation at this time, but we'll get it into an agenda.
So whereas we're cruising at a sweet hour and 25 minutes right now, you're telling us to buckle up for future long meetings. Got it. Check. Any other things you guys want on the planning calendar? All right. So I'm not seeing anybody jump in here, so at this point I'm going to move to adjourn. Wait a second.
Second.
Maybe Sharon had that one. Nice job, Sharon. We're going to do a roll call vote one more time. So on the motion to adjourn, Joe?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Myself? Yes. Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, everybody. Have a great night. Enjoy the conference, guys. Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
All right, everybody. Have a great night. Enjoy the conference, guys.